Welcome everybody to our La Salle City Council meeting dated Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, I've called meeting order. We begin with a pledge of allegiance. At this time, we will accept any motions to approve the agenda in role, given the agenda earlier for late last week. Weekend, it's time on indicating the motions. Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Second.
Second by council member two. Any other comments, discussions, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have moving on to presentations. We have. Plan commission from Mr. Ryanson, your operator. So at this time, we will hear from Mr. Dan Ryan saying with the planning commission. Make sure your mic falls off, please. You're good.
Mayor, council members. This is the somewhat belated annual report for two thousand and twenty-two. As you know, we had a considerable rework on the planning commission format because of some difficulty getting a lot of meetings accomplished last year. So what we did in a nutshell is this. Significant items were a public hearing for the materials ordinance update, which was a carryover from the Seawake Mumber variance request in two thousand and twenty-two, which led us to recommend the change in the building materials ordinance. Public hearing on that was held and we recommended that it was to be approved and recommended that in May. We also had the public hearing and recommended approval of a conditional use permit for Division Street. That's for the initial storage units there. There was also a conditional use permit. We recommended approval in June for five forty-nine home with them. That was for the outdoor storage. Unfortunately, after June, we kind of went dormant and had troubles making quorums or finding enough business items to have meetings as a result. Did not do another planning commission official meeting until December. And actually, that was an informal meeting at which we had discussed and I think informally recommended reducing the size of the planning commission from seven to five members, which the council did. So we went basically from June without having a full formal planning commission meeting. Some of the things that would have been on the agenda and were put on agendas but never were reached. For example, it was a discussion of animals and kennels ordinance one fifty-three, one oh three. And a discussion of the proposed Minnesota solar ordinance to see how that would affect or change our chapter one fifty-three, one oh eight, on which right now does not allow solar gardens. And it's a proposed Minnesota model solar ordinance that they just haven't taken up yet. We also began to discuss the role in the the composition of the planning commission. And that is basically in the two thousand and twenty-two report. We're also charged with doing a beginning of the year outline of the work plan. Oh, I neglected to mention, of course, one important thing. We did do the future of the city forum. That was not a planning commission official or action by ordinance, but it was what we were charged to do. And as you recall, if you were there. We accomplished that in March. There were a good response to a community survey that was sent out. We had the actual forum at the school in auditorium. I think semi-official columns, he had about eighty-five citizens that attended that, other than actual city staff and planning commission members and whatnot. Now, as we get into the two thousand and twenty-three upcoming work, that's again something that we are going to do. We have discussed and at this point, semi-officially decided to do it in the fall this year. City staff is looking into the timing of the school events. And with with an eye for doing it at the school again, also looking at the possible format for another, excuse me, survey. That has not been actually decided yet for our recommendation as to how to proceed on that. And as you know, the planning commission now consists of five members instead of seven. We've certainly started off well. We've got two meetings and everybody there. In addition, when we are embarking on a plan to have definite regular monthly meetings and the staff has modified the website to show that we will have Thursday, second Thursday meetings regularly. In that connection, we have asked the council to approve changing our policies and procedures to do a six-thirty meeting start, which would be now the same as the council meetings. We think that will, number one, make it easier for members to be there. And possibly members in the public will find it more convenient to. A lot of people are not necessarily home from work and finished supper. We are also going to emphasize training and all the members of the planning commission now have full set of documents, our policies and procedures, the zoning ordinances, the comprehensive plan, the downtown master plan, and Rosenburg rules of order. So we are going to be pretty well educated on how we function. And that's going to kind of be a regular ongoing study. The thinking is we're going to start actually looking at planning unit development, the ordinances with a view toward the upcoming school. And we'll go on and continue looking at things that are going to recur, like variances and conditional use permits, so that members are well versed on some of those procedures before something comes before us. And that's, you know, the work plan for this year, I think the big thing is going to be again in future the same form. So anybody have any questions or the council?
Mr. Werson, thank you again for your presentation and I really appreciate you for working down with the I think commission. I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you share with everybody who all the members are of your commission?
Okay, you know, the members are re-elected officers. The first meeting, I was returned as chair. Noel Broadland is the vice chair and John Diebel. Colleen Hay Johnson, we call her a differentiator from her husband, Terry Johnson. Those are the five members.
Do you plan on having another forum any time soon?
Since future forum? Yes, we're looking at all.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Again, thank you for your presentation. We thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda, all items on consent agenda are considered routine have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be enacted on motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, citizen, so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda considering the normal sequence. City administrator, do you want to over these with us, please?
Goodness, Mayor, members of council. On this evening's consent agenda. First, approval of city council minutes from the regular meeting on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Second, improvement of dispersments through today, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Included in those dispersments are five purchases over twenty-five thousand dollars. First to MMPA, care of bond energy from the twentieth January, two thousand and twenty-three purchase power, five hundred eighty-one thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars, thirty-three cents. Second, to integrated process solutions for a control panel of the wastewater plant for forty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars. Third, landmark structures, payment application number seventeen for the water tower, forty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-five cents. To Minnesota Public Facilities Authority and its debt service on the wastewater treatment facility and the well aid and wellhouse project, totaling forty thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. And finally, to Neo Water Treatment for some FX three hundred waste farm treatment material for thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Item C, approve Luke's Cafe bottle of love license. Item D, approve payment application number seventeen landmark structures for the aforementioned payment application number seventeen for water tower. Item E, resolution R two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero six, which adopts cogen and small power production rules for the year two thousand and twenty-three. There are no changes to note from the two thousand and twenty-two numbers we do annually. I have to bring this to the council for approval. Similarly, item F is resolution R two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero seven, approving the two thousand and twenty-three cogeneration and small power production tariff. Item G, resolution R two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero eight, approving submission of a Minnesota DNR recreation grant from Mayo Park. Item H, review and approve the two thousand and twenty-two pay equity report. Item I, declaration surplus property. And item J, personnel action, the area of full-time police officer to replace a full-time officer who resigned at the end of January.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Councilmembers, any questions regarding consent agenda?
Joe, I just have a quick question regards to the item C. Do you know something what difference between a bottle club license and a liquor license is?
Yes, so the city has not had a bottle club license application in quite some time. The bottle club is, excuse me, the bottle club license is a license that allows a business to not serve or sell its own intoxicating alcohol, but allows patrons to bring in their own, as long as they mark them as their own. I would compare it to something similar to what the Coach Line used to have. I think it's a little bit different setup, but what Luke's would like to do is, for example, have the occasional dinner and allow patrons to come in with their own bottle of wine, but Luke's will not serve or sell the wine. Much like the other liquor licenses, they have to provide proof of certain insurance to have liquor insurance on their credential as a rider on the credential policy. But they will not be serving or selling alcohol at this time.
Yes, sir, Mr. Tui.
Five, T, the application for campground?
Yes.
Few questions, actually. Is anything that'll be done to mitigate the flooding that happens down there?
That's a good question. There are no plans at this point to add flood mitigation changes to the layout of Mayo Park, such as burns or dikes or anything. Where the main shelter area is now, I'm calling focal point of recreation in Mayo Park, sits within the one-hundred-year flood lane. And as part of the park's open spaces, trails, master plan, in order to optimize the space at Mayo Park, the concepts all involve moving the focal point of that park up a few feet in elevation. And into an area that while there is a potential for flooding, it's not the risk is a little bit lower in Mayo Park. The plan at the time that council, which council considered adopted, was to still utilize Mayo Park. And one of the, so this is the grant that the city applied for last year for Legion Park. Did not receive the grant, but one thing that staff did discover is that many, several of the awardees, even some cities that have been rewarded each year, were for the creation of campsites. And campsites at Mayo Park is something that's long been considered in that area. Not permitting campsites in the event that it does flood, we don't want people stuck down there. But these would be temporary campsites and also to enhance it with benches, tables, and just all.
Okay, so within the application, it says the financial capability to meet the match requirement, if any, A is there, then B, and replacement of the proposed project for its design. You get a three foot, three feet of water there and it takes out all of the electrical outlets. The city's got to completely redo it on their nickel, correct?
So to answer the first part of your question, the match, as the application stands right now, it's pre-submission, but as it stands right now, the total cost for, that's included in the application is around two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now, the city's match can come either in in-kind form or in and for the city, which has a lot of the equipment that would be required for building something like this out, a lot of the skills among city employees that would be available to help something like this out. The bulk of the city's contribution to this match, should the city be awarded the grant, can come in the form of in-kind. So if it's a two hundred and forty thousand dollar project, let's say the city's awarded a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Right now, the in-kind contribution that's proposed by the city is a hundred and five thousand dollars. And that's use of equipment by the hour, for example, use of staff coming by the hour. Some fill and rock things that we already have. And then the one hundred and twenty thousand dollars would be used for the purchase of equipment, actually out within the park. The city would make its contribution by putting all of it in and putting it together. So the second part of your question, yes, the city would technically be on the most forward placing and the grant wouldn't come back in and replace it. What we, what we likely see is if there were such a devastating flood like we last had in two thousand and nineteen, the city would apply for FEMA assistance and hope to receive some key FEMA funds that could be used for for replacing not only the any equipment, things like that that are at the park, because it will also all be insured through the city, so we can have an accounting of everything that we have out there, but also any landscaping, forestry that would be damaged by the flood.
I've lived in this town for forty years, probably more than half of that area has been underwater at some point. Is that going to, I would assume that the, you know, the DNR is going to do the due diligence. And they're going to say, geez, that thing's underwater a third of the time. Why would we want to put campsites there? Is that going to impugn our credibility on making this application?
I understand the question. I feel confident that it won't. We have a master plan that suggests doing so that was not just city council approved, but also developed with, using a city's engineer, not the city's engineer at the time, but WSB and other engineering firm. And part of the work that they try to do is reimagine sites relatively simply at relatively low cost in areas that otherwise are prone to flooding. So example is River Park or the wastewater treatment that the city still maintains. Mayo Park would be another one. Want something that's relatively low maintenance, relatively low cost, that would augment the city's water structure that while it's at risk, is it's a risk that's reasonable.
I think the action that's ahead of us is the staff is looking for us to approve our twenty, two thousand and twenty-three dash zero eight, approving the submission of a Minnesota DNR recreational grant. So that's just to move ahead with the with the application. Is this correct, the work, really?
Correct.
And if it gets approved, what happens?
If it gets approved, we would work with the state to submit final plans, which they would review and file documentation of what what the costs would be. This would likely not look to take place until the summer of two thousand and twenty-four. Wouldn't be funded until two thousand and twenty-four. The city's obligation would not be to be submitted until two thousand and twenty-four.
But if we submit the application and it is approved, we are committed. Is that correct?
I would like to consider that, yes, we are committed.
There's not going to be a vote after the submission if it's approved.
There would be a vote to for the expenditure funds. I don't know that there would be a specific council action to accept the terms of the application, unless the terms of the application are something that we thought required council attention, for example. So tonight, the commitment, the financial commitment that is potentially being proposed right now would be fifteen thousand dollars as part of this application. If that were to change in a material way in two thousand and twenty-four, for whatever reason, they say, yeah, you can have that, but we want you to match. You can match fifty percent, but you can only give twenty-five percent in in-kind. And the other twenty-five percent's got to come from cash. All of a sudden, fifteen thousand goes to sixty thousand dollars. That would be something that we would need to come back to council for, and it's something that we'll need to discuss with the budget process for two thousand and twenty-four. Because we'll, we'll hear back on the application sometime in the June-July timeframe this year prior to budget. And ultimately, we could be awarded the funds, and if the council decides not to provide any budget for it in two thousand and twenty-four, we would technically be ineligible for our match.
Thank you. I think with that, a lot of those questions asked by council member Tui. Staff recommended approval of resolution R two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero eight, approving submission of the Minnesota DNR recreational grant fund Mayo Park campground project. Do I have a?
Can I just clarify? Yes, right. This is currently part of the consent agenda.
Oh, that's right. We are still on a consent. Yes, thank you. We are still on consent agenda. So hopefully that answers your questions.
Thank you.
I actually have one last question, Mike Kirby. Joe, on the surplus material, there's a nineteen ninety-eight M four fifty. Is that a Type O or is that, what vehicle is that?
Sorry, one second.
I don't know all about the M four fifty. That's why I'm asking.
We got one.
That would be the police reserve ring.
So probably was a Type O. I think those are E four fifty.
I believe it's registered as an E four fifty, but it is, it represents the police reserve ring. So if it's, I don't know, it's, it's healthy to start.
On that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for really reacting to consent agenda. We kind of overwhelmed a few things. With that said, any other questions regarding consent agenda? If not, they would indicate a motion to pass consent agenda. Councilmember Sullivan, second by council member Schleter. Any other discussion, comments, or concerns?
Yes, sir.
I say yes to the consent agenda. Does that include item T?
Yes, it does. That's what I thought. Just wanted to say yes, sir. Okay, good question. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? One opposed, council member Tui.
Mike Kirby, can I just ask for a point of order? Just to clarify any questions, like you can request that an item removed from the consent agenda prior to the vote.
Okay.
But that's before the approval of consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Sullivan. Moving on to public comment, I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public comment.
We do have, unless Mr. Ryanson would like to add it.
Mr. Ryanson, anything else?
I don't think so. And the company would not have much more to add.
All right, moving on from public comment, we'll move on to the city administrator update. Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a few items today that have come up over the next, the last couple of weeks. Last Friday, Police Chief Tiki, zoning administrator Nielsen, and I were able to participate in the career day at the middle school. For the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to discuss our careers, what's great about them, what's not so great about them sometimes. I didn't have any to share at that point. And it was a really successful day. It was a lot of fun. City Administrator Long Berwick and I had to kick off the morning, kind of comparing and contrasting the city of La Salle and the city of Henderson. Governmental operations, how we got where we are. Which is, it was, it was very neat. Kids asked a lot of really good questions. There's a lot of concern among our middle schoolers about Emerald Nash Porter. Which, and about our well projects and where we get our wells from. So it was really, it was a really cool opportunity to share some about our city's infrastructure and the importance of our aquifers and local, you know, geology of the area. So it was really neat. I have been approached by a group recently interested in the potential of renaming Bruce Frank Field Joe Juris School Field. I suspect they may come to council in the near future as part of public comment to share their thoughts on it, but I wanted to bring that to council tonight. That would ultimately require city council discussion and and action, and there would be some things involved on the common land and some other things. First, dedicating the name of the field. The two thousand and twenty-two financial audit field prep work has started. Finance Director Graff is a knee-deep already with Bergen KDB, was city's financial auditors again for two thousand and twenty-two. The onsite field, the onsite work is scheduled for late May, I believe. And Director Graff has quite a few tasks set at him as he prepares for for that, so he's working very closely with the auditors right now, close out two thousand and twenty-two. Our EDA staff member Zach Ubbani and I participated in this kickoff of the EDA's housing study last week with Maxfield Research and Consulting. Maxfield is a well-trusted and well-known research firm in the, in the region and very excited to kick off the study. It's really, it started with a lot of questions of the city about employers, number of employees coming into town, the number of residents leaving town, the types of housing that we have, no, anecdotally, we need. Building permit history, things like that, lot of inventory. So we're in the data collection stage right now. And once we get that to Maxfield, they'll start reaching out to local employers and probably the school district and other key stakeholders in the community to try to get some information, get some feedback from them, start compiling their report. Planning Commission met last, last Thursday, February ninth, and I would echo what Mr. Ryan said, and it's up to a a really positive start. I really liked the direction of planning commission's heading. Appreciate the leadership of the commission and the work that zoning administrator Nielsen is doing as the staff liaison to that commission. Rec facilities master plan team met again to, following our meeting with the community center task force two weeks from now, two weeks from now, just ahead of last month's meeting. And the master planning team met to discuss some next steps. There will be a meeting later this week to start to talk concepts for the community center. We've discussed at length the current layout of the community center, how it sits in relation to the school and Bruce Frank Field, what's the key priorities are based upon the feedback that we received from the stakeholder groups in the public survey. So we'll start looking at concepts later this week. The police department, the police department, we were notified in late January, the police department has been awarded a hundred and eighty thousand dollars through the United States congressionally-directed spending, funding, which is great news. So we're working now with the Department of Justice to fill out the correct application, get all the paperwork submitted and all those things. We don't have a timing right now. to fill out the correct application, get all the paperwork submitted and all those things. We don't have a timing right now on when those funds would be sent to the city. As you recall from the budget conversations last year, we had budgeted a hundred thousand dollars in the capital improvement budget at the end of last year for twenty twenty-three. Assuming we got that money, and seeing we get that money, city council will have the opportunity to redistribute those funds elsewhere in the budget for twenty twenty-three. They were, just, it was discussed that those would go into, um, street maintenance, which we aren't assuming at this point, because it will be implied to be a budget amendment for council, and my one, but that was, is the direction council wanted to take, that would be reallocated to street maintenance for twenty twenty-three. So as soon as that, as soon as they get, notice that that money's coming in, uh, we can have the conversation at council to reallocate the money. At this point, our recommendation will be that that's real, allocate street maintenance, as the bidding process will be coming up for that for twenty twenty-three. Uh, we've had several conversations with the school district around the future of Park Elementary, uh, nothing really much to report here. Has been reported by the press that the school district does plan to list that property, um, for sale. And what I'd just like to add is that we continue, Superintendent Wagner and I continue to have regular conversations around the future of that property. What it means, it's a valuable asset to our community, uh, sitting in a key location within our community, just adjacent to our premier park and surrounded on three other sides by residential neighborhood, so the future of that eleven, ten, eleven acres is very important to, um, the community overall. And so Superintendent Wagner and I will continue to have conversations as they move through their process. Uh, finally, I will be out of the office, City Hall, uh, starting tomorrow afternoon, I'll be returning late next Wednesday, I will be available for council members, um, I just won't be here at City Hall. And that's all I have for tonight, are there any questions?
Very good, thanks for sharing all of this. Anybody have any questions for City Administrator? Not. We will move on to the regular agenda, which is very short tonight. It's the, uh, two thousand twenty-three planning commission policies and procedure updates, Mr. Ryerson spoke to us earlier, I think we have a little insight on what that change is gonna be. Mr. Roby, you wanna review that with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, this, Mr. Ryerson gave a great update of this, so there's not much I can add, um, other than, um, I, again, appreciation. I expressed my appreciation to the Planning Commission and, and Mr. Nielsen for having the conversation around policies and procedures, it's an important discussion that the Planning Commission should have annually. And they just kicked off the conversation, I would not say they had a comprehensive review of, of it yet, but one of the first actions they would like to take is changing the start time of their regular, six P M, six-thirty P M, uh, hopefully to get more members of the public able to attend that meeting, and also lines up with the time of the city council numbers. Through the council meetings, that's a little bit easier to remember. So, uh, the action that's before council tonight would be to approve the updated, uh, planning commission policies and procedures as they're included in the package tonight, the only change other than formatting to make it look, read a little bit clearer, is the, uh, meeting start time change.
Start time change is moving from six to six-thirty, so, um, this is where we read the motion, uh, just a moment ago. Okay, motion.
Salute.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleter, Councilmember Williams, seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
I.
Anybody to post? The ayes have. Moving on to, uh, reports, items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity to share, uh, any commissions or any news you want to share about the community. Uh, this is your time, we will start with, uh, as always, Councilmember Huntington.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I do have a couple of things, uh, Tuesday, last Tuesday, we had our, our PAC meeting, and I'm gonna read a report from Allison Watkins regarding the creative center. Uh, it's basically a summary of, uh, year-end of twenty twenty-two, and what they, uh, their numbers were as far as people. So the entity, twenty twenty-two, in public skate, we had five-hundred-and-forty-two people. On skate rental, they had two-hundred-and-thirty-four people that rented skates. Open youth hockey, they had two-hundred-and-ninety-seven participants. And during daily admissions for the year for the gym and fitness center, there was four or ten. Uh, and then they gave a, uh, a report on the golf simulator. At the end of January, for the month of January, they booked ninety-two hours, and so they were in line for what they wanted to be. And upcoming in twenty twenty-three of the outdoor pool, staff is working on dates for annual swimming lessons scheduled right now, they're projecting a opening date of June second and then closing on August thirteenth. It's a little bit earlier this year, uh, they're thinking about closing just because they lose a lot of staff of, uh, lifeguards still going to even for college, and fall sports start at the same time. They're looking at to add a Saturday option for swimming, for swim lessons this season, because it's interfered with, uh, family swims and stuff like that. And let's see, a new pool heater was being ordered for the main outdoor pool. I suppose that would be here by sometime. And I believe that is it, if everybody wants to know, the dryland area and the arena is open for the association and the high school has been using it. If you haven't seen it, on the second floor of the arena. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Moving on to Councilmember Schleter.
Few things, on the twenty-fifth, I did attend the call, went to the Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Action Day up at Capitol. It was pretty much an all-day event, governor did come to speak with us, and I did have sit-down meetings with Senator Grayheide and Representative Farr. That evening, I had another meeting for the Leesler County officials in the center, and I did brief Administrator Roby on both of those meetings. Had a planning mission meeting last Wednesday, Chair Ryerson pretty much commented on everything that happened there. I had two Region Nine meetings since our last council meeting, one on the Legislative Committee and also on the Energy Committee. Got another Energy Committee meeting on Wednesday in New Ulm that I'm gonna be attending, and also another legislative meeting that will probably be taking place in about two weeks, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleter, Councilmember Sullivan.
Mayor, I have nothing to report tonight, but I do have one clarifying question for Joe. Um, looking back at the C I B C E P that was approved at the budget time in December, it does show that we specifically allocated that hundred thousand for the radio upgrade slash street maintenance, so I don't think it would be a change in our budget. Am I correct?
Um, you're likely correct, yes, and it is, it's perhaps more of a procedural ask of me to have the council confirm that.
At the December, we approved the C I P that included that, the funds came to the streets.
Correct, it was effectively different way of saying, we're gonna approve three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for street maintenance contingent upon the receipt of a hundred thousand dollars from, minimum a hundred thousand dollars from the fence.
Thank you.
Which now we have received, so.
That's what I remembered also, thank you. That all?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Swaller, there's God, Councilmember Tui.
Yes, uh, you invited by.
Go for it.
Uh, Pam and I, Ken Williams and I, uh, attended, uh, this past Friday and half the Saturday, the, uh, League of Minnesota Cities program for newly affect, newly elected officials. And it ran the gamut from, uh, everything from conflict of interest to open meeting laws, uh, pretty much anything and everything you could think of it would, uh, would, uh, one might confront as a, an elected official. It was complicated in some cases, and you were jaw-dropping in others, that the minutia some of these laws go into. But I think overall, Pam, would you agree, it was worth, it was, it was informative, and it was, uh, to me, anyway, eminently ob- obvious that these people knew their stuff. They, they really, uh, they've gotten their finger on the pulse of state, so. I would highly recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Tui? Okay, thank you. I did tell that myself about four years ago, found it very research, yeah, so, it's a wonderfully run program in the League of Minnesota Cities. Uh, moving on to Councilmember Williams.
I did want to share a document that everybody took, that's reminding emphasize competencies, so, with, um, competencies for effectively elected leaders, so I just wanted to share kind of concise document that was really, um, pretty good. And then the networking opportunity, rather than some of the other cities, being able to network with, um, some of those people was, uh, very, uh, helpful, and people were really open, saying, you know, we're a small town too, and that kind of thing. Um, also, and each R E meeting last week, um, working on reviewing the, um, bylaws and policies in this next coming year, so, forward to come out back.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Kirby, I don't have anything to report tonight, I wanna, uh, thank you everybody for the time tonight, at this time, I'll undertake any motion to dismiss this meeting. Salute, thank you. All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.